Can you read lips, Scott?
No.
Not well, but, you know, I'll just fill in the blanks as I see fit.
Okay. Just don't look at Paul like that.
Chief, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. Let's officially call this January 17 meeting an Obergeissler Council order. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to that or can we move forward with that?
This would be the revised agenda, correct?
Yeah, there was a revision made on Monday. So there's an additional liquor license.
I will move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second to that, thank you. Move second to approve the agenda as revised. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, welcome Scott, you're okay hearing and speaking, okay? Anybody else on?
Just Scott.
Alright, good. Um, communications, this is a part of the meeting that if anybody is here to speak to something that's on today's meeting agenda, please wait until that item on the agenda is reached. If you wish to address the city council on an item not on the agenda, please approach your microphone and give your name and address for public record before discussing your item. And each individual is granted more than five minutes. So this is the time if anybody wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda, to come forward and do so. Last call, anybody? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got three items now on consent agenda between minutes and liquor license approvals. Any questions or can we move forward on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Stephanie. So second again. Alright, Mark. Move seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no public carries today. And move to ordinances. Chris, anything to add about this one?
No. As I stated in my report, um, not this ordinance, but the second ordinance, from a timing perspective, I would ask, since there's been no communication on it, to waive the readings. You could do it on this one as well. They're both, um, I think, controversial items. But you would have to make a motion to approve the second reading. And then make a motion after that was approved, um, to waive the third and final reading. That takes four out of five votes in favor.
Has it? Second, um, I'll move on to second reading, then vote on it.
Correct.
And then move in the second on, and then you need back. Perfect. What is the will of the council on amended comprehensive plan and official zoning map? To zone all lots within the Stone Plaza 10th Edition. See two bill commercial to misuse.
I move approval on ordinance one dash two dash 2024A.
That's the first step of the second reading. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Mark. It's moved in seconded to move forward with the second reading on that, um, ordinance. And if there are no questions, if we're ready to vote, I think that was yours. Call.
Turner.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. And continuing on to the third reading, if that is the will of the group.
I move to the third reading.
You call, is there a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie. Move seconded to move on with the third reading of that, um, particular ordinance approval. No other questions, prepare the votes. Here's Lori.
Turner.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Well, same vein, next one, ordinance one dash two dash 2024B. Making the Obergeissler Comprehensive Plan to establish a zoning classification of property being annexed into the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Let's go through the multiple steps here. First of all, the second reading, is there any clarification needed or questions of staff?
Has there been any questions since the first?
No.
I will move to approve ordinance one dash two dash 2024B.
Thank you, Stephanie, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I'll give it to Scott. This is on the second reading here, Stephanie and Scott. And if we're ready to vote on that one, Lori, it is just all yours.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
That motion passes. Moving on to the third reading, if we're still interested in moving forward there.
I move approval of the third reading of ordinance one dash two dash 2024B.
You call, is there a second?
I'll second.
Good, thank you, Mark. Any last minute questions? Otherwise we'll move forward with that, that reading vote.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
And that's ordinance passes. Moving to resolutions. Moving to budget transfers for fiscal year 2024.
So this resolution, um, is in a review of four transfers right now. The one that you've discussed already and took a formal vote on at the last meeting is the moving the Fourth, Fifth Water, Fourth Street, Fifth Avenue water main. Money is to the PD, construction, um, moving the sale of the proceeds from the fire station, old fire station, two public works to complete concrete work there. Business 30 Culvert repairs was an emergency situation. And Triskey is just as small as your demo.
I move approval of resolution one dash seventeen dash 2024A.
Second.
And Stephanie. It's moved in seconded to move forward with resolution, um, of budget transfers. If you're ready to go on to that, um, federal public.
Yeah.
Engel.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to the next item, mayor proclamation. Something that was traditionally done in January. And we have some guests here from Chains Limited.
It happens all the time. It's just a thing.
Tish Young, Lisa Becker, and Marilyn Mueller here. And, um, do you want to speak?
We'd love to.
Okay, that's now's the time.
Alright.
You're welcome back to Mount Vernon.
Well, thank you so much.
You can just push the button on the mic. You're good.
Right here?
Yep, and it should turn green.
It is.
Alright.
And I do know red from green.
You're good.
My name is Tish, this is Lisa, and Marilyn, where Chain's interrupted. We've been working with Mount Vernon, we've been in this city for a long time. In fact, Chief Shannon has been a part of Chain's Interrupted, um, and on our team for many, many years. We've, um, trained at your high school. And we feel very confident that you are in really good hands with Chief Shannon, because he knows what's, what to look for. You've actually had a case here, um, historically. And thank you for the article. I didn't get to read it all, but I'm excited. But once again, we just, we really feel it's important to foster specifically with a college town and all of your youth. It is just important to really raise awareness, um, make sure our kids know that you're a safe place to land and, um, that we're, we're here to, to support you in your efforts to keep a safe community. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sometimes we think we're in a bubble here, but we are a part of a, a larger universe here. I will now read that mayor proclamation into public record. Establishing January 2024 as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will. Exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking, regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion was used. And whereas one of the world's fastest growing crimes is the buying and selling of people, whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to an increase in other social injustices, such as abuse, domestic violence, racism, signatism, and more. Communities in rural Iowa are seeing a significant increase in the number of children victimized by their trafficking, especially children coming to the United States from Central America. And whereas there's a large disparity between the number of persons victimized by this horrific crime and the number of persons prosecuted as offenders, with more than 661 victims receiving services in Iowa's direct services program alone in 2022, and only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking, and four in Iowa's state appellate courts. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and to go vastly unreported. And whereas every business, community, organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking, choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas, City of Mount Vernon joins Chain's Interrupted in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotional services to survivors of human trafficking in collaboration with law enforcement. And now therefore I, Thomas M. Weasler, Mayor of Mount Vernon, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all our citizens to become more informed of this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end human trafficking in all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chain's Interrupted at 319-364-0222. And if you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed with the seal of the City of Mount Vernon the 17th day of January 2024. And I all sign this, Thomas M. Weasler, Mayor of Mount Vernon. The article in the Sun was referenced. Thank you for printing that and, um, let me get it to you because I haven't remembered what it is. So thanks Nathan for printing it. But, um, I've gotten, um, more comments about that being in there. But they appreciated learning that and having that reminded of, being reminded of that. And you think, this is a little of Mount Vernon, is that an issue here? But as the title says, they don't, it can happen here. This summer long weekend in Cincinnati, just picked Cincinnati, drive there. One of the places we visited was, um, a museum on slavery. It's right, it was right on the Mason Dixon line, I guess, uh, right across the river, where literally the line was for slavery, anti-slavery and anti-slavery areas. But as part of that museum, there was a huge display on human trafficking, slavery and whatever form it is now, it exists. I mean, there was a huge display about it, huge numbers and, um, just case studies of incidents that happened in this town in, um, in, in, where in Ohio. It's this town in Ohio here by the interstate, this town over here by the interstate. Caucus night, uh, a person came up to me and said that her daughter works for the counselor in Des Moines. And talked about the 35 Interstate 80 junction there. That is a, um, a hot area of course, things like that, um, with the interstate connection. So this is very, very real. And, um, it is very, very important that we do, um, recognition like this. So I'm very honored and glad to do this proclamation. So thank you for presenting this and for coming to. And, uh, I saw it on TV the night you did this at Ely, uh, two weeks ago. So you guys are a pretty big deal, so.
We would love a picture if you get a chance. We'll wait till your meeting's over, but we'd love a picture with all of you and, you know, get your thing.
You can take a, you can take a break and take a picture so that you don't have to stick around for the interview.
I was just gonna say recently, and of course it's gonna escape me now, but I saw a movie that was based on a true story. Yes. At the end, it says it is a $250 billion business. And there are currently more enslaved people in the United States than what there were when slavery was legal. That really struck me. And for that reason, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna put these phone numbers in my phone.
Yeah.
Because you never know what you're gonna see and when.
You don't.
But if everybody were to do that and have them right at your fingertips.
The United States is the most largest consumer and producer of pornography and trafficking, you know, all the things that go under trafficking business. So we are a very selfish country.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I just wanna straight, take a moment too and recognize their work and what they do in law enforcement. It's been one of the organizations, one of the, you know, we, we're working with a lot of different groups in, in law enforcement, bringing in resources for different community approaches and stuff like that. But by far Chain's Interrupted and the work that they have done in Iowa and nationally, um, politically, and driving legislative changes. And then resources, um, for interventions and for survivors and everything else from that standpoint. They are truly saving lives. Um, and it's been one of the, the best programs that I've worked with in my career. So, um, they're great people and they're doing great work saving lives. So hats off.
That says a lot.
Because education is so important. And Tom, thank you for taking time to get, become more educated. And then the inspiration of your letter to the editor. We have this speaker series at the Lester Beerish Center that, uh, every Thursday is kind of a, just a learning hour where someone will come and speak for 30 minutes, 40 minutes. And of any kind of topic, but it's to have a better educated citizenry here in Mount Vernon. And it also helps shape the culture of the community as well. And, uh, so if, if next year, January is also going to be human trafficking.
Every year.
Think about that or, or, or another time. One of our one to two, or one to two. Bob Necker contacted you about speaking last Thursday? Or who was it?
No, uh, Sarah did.
Absolutely, okay.
Sarah was, but I can just send Matt and Sarah a note. There's a, a collective group of individuals that can make recommendations on, on the actual series, but they're always looking for new information to provide to the community, so.
We're available anytime.
Absolutely, we'll, uh.
You're not a January organist, right?
I will pass that information along as, um. Yeah, I think it would be a good. Consequently, I've seen that movie advertised and I'm scared to watch it.
I'd like to thank you as well, um, as a new councilperson here, but coming to the meetings. You know, I've been seeing you guys come each year. And I've educated myself a lot regarding this. Um, yeah, just as being a single dad with a child. So, uh, just, you know, all the dangers that are out there. And I think parents can always learn more. There's certainly, um, you know, this will worsen more down, doesn't happen here. I hear that a lot, just when it comes to different things. But, you know, it does happen here. And, um, thank you, Mayor, for, uh, your article on the paper. Because public people realize, you know, even when it just comes to simple things like checking, you know, making sure your children don't have location services on. Simple things like that. You know, we're, we don't know, we're probably just giving away our addresses at any given time. So, you know, just simple things that people could probably use some help on with that.
I think Mount Vernon has something that a lot of towns don't have. And I say that because I drive all the way here to go to the doctor. I mean, I know that this town is, is amazing. You have community. You've still created an environment where your neighbor is a safe place to talk to and a safe place to land. And that, in my mind, is the best thing you can do to fight human trafficking, is to be a safe place for the children of your community to land and talk to without feeling like, um, the world's gonna blow up because they said something that was a little bit different. So empowering these children by being good adult humans in their space is by far one of the best things you can do. There's always a lot in the circle and all the other things, but just being a safe place to land is important.
Perfect, thank you. You wanna take a quick break? We'll use this as prop for our next meeting with the John Hart and Cornell. Because, you know, sometimes they don't feel like they're part of the community, that they're just on the edge of town and so on. But this is, speaks directly to half, you know, probably 60% of the population.
Yep.
And yes, we're gonna take a break. And, uh, how do you wanna set that up or?
We just want a picture of all of you with the proclamation and, um, and that kind of thing. So if you don't mind, that would be very, maybe the paper too, just because it's not cool.
Maybe you can stand up by Scott, right?
Scott twice behind us. Oh, where, where do you want us? Right here?
Scott's black.
That was good, Scott. Why don't you stand next to the mayor? Watch out for my back.
Chief Shannon, you have been a part of this organization before, since the beginning, quite honestly. He and Theresa have been friends for a really long time. So. Paul's not there.
You got Scott in there?
He did. Thank you so much.
Anytime to do speaking at any, like, all throughout the year, any day of the week, there's always somebody available. Just reach out to Tish or one of us.
Any of us.
We can arrange it, we, you know, we gotta call it, or schools.
We have our own office, our own downtown. So Theresa used to be the Anti-Human Trafficking Coordinator at our special site. One of the first five in the entire country, so.
There's some worse than that.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got full business, and I didn't know we tabled last meeting.
We don't have any invoice yet, so I would go ahead and just recommend leaving it tabled for the time being.
Okay. Thanks for capturing that, moving on to the next one. Motion for approval of claims list. Excuse me. Questions off our claims list? Staff? Questions? I would move them to approve the claims list. Thank you, Craig, is there a second?
A second.
Mark. Move seconded to approve the claims list as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of pool and bondy recommendations. We've got a renovation plan, Waters Edge.
So there's a couple documents that I just wanna touch on tonight. The first was sent separately, but it is, um, Waters Edge Report, basically outlining, um, what the renovations would potentially look at if we work with the existing facility. I'm not gonna go through this entire document. Basically, it boils down to their estimates come out to be about 1.276 million. Just to renovate the structure and then there's some, obviously there's some kind of à la carte items, for apparatus that probably need to be added in. And, and I put in my report, at least probably a couple of them would be, um, added to the project for the, some of the things that we're losing at that. So.
Aqua zip looked dangerous.
Yeah, there is a couple that, um, I'm not 100%.
Did you see that?
I'm not 100% sure the state's gonna approve them. That's kinda why they give you an à la carte menu, so, um, so that leads to the bigger discussion. So here's what I can tell you as of right now when it comes to bar. We have the water meter project that's already been approved. That's a million dollars. We have, um, the CHI, One Street Extension, part of that development project for 750,000, already been approved by council. I would love to package this in one, basically one bar. So what I did was have Maggie run a 4.5 million dollar bar. That would give you 2 million for the pool. So that would be the one, you know, the necessary that we know. And then a decent cushion, because the structure is so old that my expectations are we're going to run into problems. The one that.
Speaking of the manager's building.
The one that is, is in there. That you could take out, um, is that 750,000 for various infrastructure improvements. But the reason that I stuck that in is, um, Fourth Street Northwest, for instance, is probably faster than, uh, expected. Summit and, um, 10th, the intersection there. If anybody has driven over that going at any rate of speed, can tell you how many bumps are there. So there are some infrastructure projects that, you know, I can take advantage of potential borrowing here and get some and lump them into maybe a two-year type of style project. I am 100% telling you that I'm spitballing with 750. I have no idea how long that will go. But 4.5 million leaves us a little bit of a cushion, plus the 20% until the following year when we buy down another million dollars worth of debt. So, um, it's what I felt comfortable with. I think we can get some projects accomplished. It would just be a matter of sitting down with the engineer and saying, okay, this is the pool money we've got. Let's see what we can do. So, big picture, you do not have to. It's kind of a misnomer that you would have to make a decision on what needed to happen in the pool renovations, because it's not. I put the timeline in there from Spear Financial, because we want those monies before the end of this fiscal year. That timeline is tight. So it starts at the next meeting. And that's why I'm just basically putting broad numbers in there. It's not like the money goes away or we can't use it. So if, if one project saves a little bit, as long as it's, um, being utilized within the same issuance, we could do the same thing that we did with the water meter project and move them around. But in a nutshell, um, I can't, we can't not leave something in the pool. And we can't build a brand new one.
I don't think anybody here, I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, is surprised with these figures, because we have talked about these. The infrastructure one, um, it's, it's, it's good to have that and you've explained why it's there and so on. For me, my biggest question, I've got two questions, but the biggest one is why 19 years? Is that's pre-standard? Because, and here's the second part of the question, you stayed in your, um, in, in, uh, in your notes here that by going 19 years, it's gonna preclude any continued conversation on the pool for at least 10 years on that, which means we're kicking it down the road for another council or another group to, another team, for Lori when she's in charge.
So does it make it more challenging? Yes. I mean, anytime that you have debt on the books, that you're paying for a project and then you're going to sit here and try and convince somebody to spend or borrow again for a brand new project, I think the conversation becomes difficult. So by me pointing that out, I wanted everybody to understand, excuse me, that, um, over the course of at least, at least the next 15. Because all of the bonds have a call date on them. You could theoretically revamp them at that point. But to answer your question, because the payments are heavy.
And, and that is typically what people do with their loans. What can we afford to pay every month or every year?
Anything less than, than the 19 would really make me squirmish about what we could afford to repay with TIP. Remember, anything that we take from TIP also takes from our general fund, from the school's general fund. I mean, yes, there's arguments to be made about reimbursements to the school district, so on and so forth. But again, the more that we take, the more that we identify, the less that we even have in our own coffers in the general fund. At a time when, again, we had 8.8% growth and we're, we're ended up with a negative number this year. So, um, I don't like the 19, I typically don't try to go past 15.
Well, again, that precludes us, or any of the council and administration, from having discussions on big ticket items. There's never been a ticket item that we've looked at as a city that's larger than the pool, to do the whole new pool, correct? So in your crystal ball, um, what else would we have to kick down the road in the next 15 years? Because it seems like, you know, for, for $5 million. Because it seems like for 5 million dollars.
So I get, I'm just going to be extremely blunt. Not only this 19 years, but the entire conversation about the pool. The pool, in my opinion, doesn't happen without a robust capital campaign, period. There's just, it's improbable to sit here and think that the city of Mount Vernon is going to be able to keep their borrowing capacity, that gap, open, or make it to 12 to 13 million without A, significant growth, or B, doing absolutely nothing for a period of time in order to, you know, increase that window. So 12 to 13 million dollars for a new pool, realistically, from my perspective, doesn't happen, period, without a capital campaign. Now, if sometime in the next period of time, in 19 years, there is a robust community outreach or somebody leaves a significant amount of money, all wonderful things, it's not as if you couldn't borrow for another pool, you're just going to be paying for two. Or you look at the call date and you look at revamping that payment.
Well, borrow 4.5 million and pay 2.5 of that, 2.2 million in interest.
So I have this question. If, you know, it's going to stretch out the ability to get a new pool, or as long as you're talking about, the recommendations were based on a 10-year plan. Does that knowledge of it being a little longer, would that change anything they might recommend?
I think we go into it saying we need it to last 10 years to pull well. I mean, it wasn't as if we hid from Water's Edge that, I mean, I'm not going to, we're not going to get to the end of that 10-year period and say, you know, everything's going to fall apart at that point. We'll have to continue to do things over the course of that next 10 years. But here's some of the outliers that we don't know. Our current pool, even though it loses money, gains revenue from Solon, Springville, Ely, Lisbon, Mount Vernon. You know, they're all growing communities. Any one of those communities could decide at some point in the near future to build their own pool. And if it does, it changes the dynamic of that 12 to 13 million dollar project, because that's based upon the usership that we're currently seeing. And if those communities start to decide that that's an amenity that they want to build, that might change the trajectory of our own conversation here. So there's so many variables that go into this. The only knowns that I have right now are, one, the existing pool can't go much longer without a significant capital outlay.
I think we knew that.
But, and two, as I told Matt and staff, I don't foresee a new pool in this community in my time. I just don't. We have the downtown streetscape, or what we're going to do with the downtown. We have Highway One. We have a lot of infrastructure that needs attending to. So the reality of us sitting here and painting some glorious picture that we're going to be able not to borrow money for the next five, six, seven, eight years, it just is unrealistic.
Right, especially on top of the factor that you just built the wellness center and then have a school facility, so.
So that was, I mean, this was kind of my gut punch moment to the council and the community that let's borrow 2 million, let's get a new slide, let's get some new amenities, let's fix what we have, and it's probably going to be there for 10, 15 years plus.
And if families consider moving to Mount Vernon in the future, that would check that box. Do they have a pool? Yes, they have a pool. They don't necessarily say it needs to be a brand new pool. So I think we're there.
Plus, you know, you just talked about people from other communities coming in here to use that pool. And let's not forget, they might be getting gas here, going to a restaurant, seeing the events that are coming up and coming back. You know, there's a lot of value in that, too.
And my only question was the 19 years.
Yeah, it's, if you look at that, that particular borrowing, it's just the fact that even, even at 19 years, we have years where it's 450,000 dollar payments. So that's, that's a decent amount coming out of our TIP allowable at any one given time. Now, that's the other thing. You know, when both of these subdivisions come on fully, when we're not rebating taxes for infrastructure in those locations, your phase one for Spring Meadow Heights, for instance, is 4.6 million taxable. That's phase one of four. So there's a lot of potential out there.
Like a family can pay down a 30-year mortgage in 22 years. If they have the haps to do it, we can do the same thing.
And as we continue to see growth, that will, that will, again, have the potential to change how quickly or how much, you know, you have the ability to buy down.
From my perspective, I can share that over the years, the last 20-some years that I've been involved in various degrees, either on council or as mayor, it is not uncommon for us to take advantage of the opportunities based upon what we don't know today. There were a number of times where we had, you know, bonds going out 15 years that we were able to, you know, pay down, restructure, however we did it. I don't know all the magic that people in Chris know, and I really don't want to know all that magic, that's why we pay them. But I can tell you that it works. The other thing that I think is extremely wise is to package your borrowing into a larger borrowing at once, looking at doing multiple projects and instead of saying, okay, we're going to do 2 million for the pool, and then in two years, we're going to do, you know, 1.5 million for infrastructure. Let's just get it now. As Chris said, it's not like you spend it immediately, because there's engineering that goes into it, there's seasons that determine when you can do certain projects. And it gives you flexibility at the lowest cost possible. And so I think that what Chris and the staff have really done here is put together the best-case scenario in a less-than-best situation. You know, if the, if the pool were not in the condition it was today, if it was, you know, not an issue, we would be borrowing for other things, other needs, because the pool would not be a need at that time. I believe as an amenity in our community, the pool is a need. I'm not, I don't want to close down the pool under my watch, on council, and see what happens. I would prefer to do this, but I also can tell you from very personal experience, when he talks about Fourth Street North, the road is crumbling, you know, and I'm waiting to have my car go down into the substructure sometime. But we may do with what we have. And that's the other thing, is sometimes we kick the can so far down Palisades Road, I think is another good example. We put certain needs off, because we believe it'll last. And anytime you're working with structures and infrastructure, there are unknowns. You know, it's like Jim Moore used to say, whenever you dig a hole in the ground, you don't know what you're going to find. You cannot anticipate what you're going to find. And that's why when we do major road projects, we oftentimes do them in such a way that we aren't just doing the surface. We're doing the surface, the water, the sewer, all in one package. Because again, I'm going to quote Jim, because, you know, he nailed these things when it came to these projects. You don't want to build a brand-new concrete road and six months later be tearing it up because you've got a water line break, because you didn't go down and fix that and replace that, I should say, not fix, but replace and upgrade while you had that space open. And so I just, I'm a champion, if you will, of this type of thing. 19 years, that's projected. And I think it's wise to project that, because you don't want to, you know, do 15 and have over, you know, overpay. And not overpay in terms of you're paying more than you should, but overpay in terms of you're then restricting yourself too much because of the impacts. I think this is a very solid proposal to meet the needs. And I would also say, when it comes to the pool, and when Chris talks about it, you know, a capital project and financing, that this is a call to arms. And it's a lot, it, to me, would make a lot more sense to start that effort today, knowing that it's not going to happen in 10 years, but allow people the opportunity to know that they can make a lasting difference in our community. And get that built up to where we can then take action in, you know, 12, 13 years versus 20. Rather than just say, you know, we hope somebody walks up with, you know, 10 million dollar checks up there. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Chris, one question. Paul touched on it a little bit, but I just want to, when we talk about flexibility and we look at the numbers in the four buckets, basically, the water meter, the Glen Street, general infrastructure, and then the pool. If, the pool as an example, let's say we only decide to do, spend 1.5 million, but we borrowed 2. Does that remaining 500,000 have to go back into the pool, or can it be used in some other way?
You could actually make a bond payment with it if you wanted to.
So we just turn around and pay down the principal and?
You wouldn't be able to go in and negotiate with that bank immediately and say, you know, we want to buy half a million dollars down on the principal. You could turn around and make bond payments with it, so supplement, you know, the 450,000 dollars one year with whatever amount you don't use. You could choose to move it to one of the other buckets within that, those four categories. So you'll have an option.
But to that point, it would have to be one of those four, because that's what we borrowed for.
Yes. Now, the 750,000 dollars of infrastructure probably isn't going to list specific streets. So the one positive is if you do do infrastructure, you could move it there and probably use it citywide.
And have more flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just thinking back to the battle we had over the lost funds between Trails and the fire station, thinking, let's not.
Yeah, it's.
Lay with ourselves into, you know, something.
It's still specific to the ordinance adopting the borrowing and what you list within that. It's not as challenging as local optional tax, where it actually went to a vote of the people and you'd have to go back to a vote. So, and I think to, to other comments, if you look at, within, I mean, 2032 is the call date on the bonds. I really hope that I'm still here in 2032. But we can have a discussion at that point. There's two years of 450,000 dollar payments before then they dip down to 250. So we could restructure the debt at that point, depending on where we're at, from a growth and, and other borrowing standpoint. But this will keep us busy while we lay the groundwork for, again, the downtown and other projects, Highway One that's going to be under construction. There's a lot of things that are waiting in the wings, that are going to be going through, you know, the engineering process, why we're doing this, and it should just hopefully be kind of a continuous cycle. Though it's always going to look busy in the community, for sure. So, you know, this would allow us to turn Water's, Water's Edge loose on more of an actual design process. The tricky thing with the pool becomes trying to schedule this. So the thought would be, we would bid it with a hard start date of maybe, like, closing the pool like a week or so early, hard start, and then hopefully have enough time for contractors to move in and do the construction and be open in 2025. It's a lot of ifs and a lot of crossing my fingers hoping, but that's the plan. The flip side is what you're going to see this year. I mean, the plan is to open this year, but it will be without the slides on the north side. I can't put those back in there. I think we'll get by with the diving boards for this year, so the diving boards will still be there, but, I mean, we're taking away and not putting back. And this allows you, at least the next couple of months, to start kind of diving into. Diving into the whole project, but, yeah, like I said, you don't have to necessarily make any decisions as it relates to what needs to happen at the pool yet, but I'm giving you a big enough cushion to make sure that you can do the renovations. You should be able to add some apparatus in, and we should have enough cushion in case we run into the unknowns when we start making the hole.
There is a certain, call it advantage, if you will, or, or something to be gained in terms of running the pool without certain amenities per year, because it will be a good place to have those discussions with the community, you know, and, because sometimes if you don't, if you can't see, touch, you know, taste, feel, understand something in a, in a real way, it's not real. So this will be a real year of, this is what we're doing, and what does the community want at some point in the future? We're managing as best we can, and if it is we don't have slides and a bunch of kids go home and complain because we don't have slides, you know, slides, maybe, you know, charges up the community, saying, well, what can we do to help?
Yeah, my, my hope is, is we'll have a rough year to a certain extent. I mean, we have swimming lessons, Katie does an excellent job. I mean, everybody that works there does a wonderful job of making do, especially with what we have so far. With, you know, that kind of grand reopening feel, people are going to be able to see, you know, the potential for a slide going up in the air and like, oh my God, I can't wait for that to open up. There'll be a new diving board, a couple of new features, whatever those end up being. We want to get new umbrellas, we want to potentially, I'm not going to get tired of being saying this, but the dead tree is coming out one way or the other and extending the concrete, you know, further to the west, giving people more. concrete, you know, further to the west, giving people more access to sit out, maybe more shade. Ellen and I have talked about, they've done a wonderful job kinda cleaning up fireworks building adjacent to it, but there's more that we can do. The more that we can move out to the new Bryant roadside, the less we can have to park over there. So there's a lot of things that we can do, where the course of the next year, if we know that this project is moving forward. And I would, I would love to get some of these smaller infrastructure projects, these hundred-thousand-dollar projects off the table, and do as many of them as we can, you know, over the course of the two or three years. Yeah.
I think it's a good plan. Do you need, what do you need from us tonight?
So, a formal recognition that you're okay with this dollar amount, because again, every time we do this, there's, you saw the fees that go along with the borrowing, so it's not inexpensive to go down this road. So I wanna make sure before I contact fathers, coonies, and financial, that this is the route moving forward, that I have consensus from the council.
I think it's a good plan. And like I said, if we can get rid of some of these smaller projects, this is, those are things that I'd really like to get done now, instead of keep kicking them down the road, so we can focus on the bigger things that we have coming up, so. Very simple for me.
So everybody nodding, how do you feel?
Yeah, I think, like I said, you're not as excited as having a brand-new shiny turnkey thing, but this is the next best option, for sure.
I think there's a really, you know, there's a really good way to fill out the pool. It's not, you know, it'd take a lot to fill out the pool, there's not that much space in it.
Right, right.
And when Scott and I swam in that pool when we were kids, there was no slide. And we still had fun. Right, Scott?
Well, there was no slide, the whole zero deck didn't even exist.
Well, right.
It was just an L from the boards over to the poolhouse, so...
It was a thrill to count the train cars.
We were living big, let me tell you.
You aren't that old.
I look forward more than anything.
I'm telling you, kids can still have fun.
Where did you, you know, put your horse?
To give staff an opportunity to work in something that doesn't feel like a closet and then sell concessions out of something that doesn't feel like a shed would be enough for me. But yeah, I think when we're done, it'll be...
I'm just, I'm glad to still have it.
Yeah, for sure.
It's important in our community.
Mr. Slade, do you have anything to add to this discussion? No question, right?
Oh, it's all good.
There we go. Well, I just wanted to ask Stephanie and Scott if they ever jumped into the quarry from the cliff, but we'll save that. Did you hear that, Scott?
Only, only a couple of times.
Okay. That would be your slide, basically, but, no, I agree with everything that's been said. The biggest thing, the hardest thing for us is that, to hear the words that we will not have a new pool. But we've done the best we can with what we've had. The funds have always not been available for renovations for the pool, and so it's just, it just has gotten worse and worse, and then we got excited about getting a new pool, but to know that we have a hard time affording it. So I think it's a good plan, and there, you gotta remember, the excitement for the LBC occurred, this was, that was a twenty-year project, a lot of you know that, were involved in it, and it just took a couple of years of coming up with a good plan for that facility to enable to raise some funds to be able to provide that, so. And to what it is today, and I know I'm biased, because I'm there all the time, but every time we have people come into that facility, it is nothing but praise, nothing but praise. And so knowing that we have an opportunity to possibly do that with the pool is another huge opportunity for us to put a feather in our cap and to have more people look at us in envy. I mean, there are communities, I hate talking about the LBC all the time, but there are communities, there's, Coral Hill is coming next week to our facility, because they envy it and they want to build something as good or better than that. And so the pool, this is a stepping stone for the pool to be the same way, but we've gotta get to that ten-year mark and beyond, and this is the way to do it, so. Yeah, I apologize, I'm, there's a chocolate walk meeting upstairs as well, so I'm bouncing between both of them, so, thank you.
I know, tip in the staff, tip in Parks and Rec people, went through a couple of months ago that you toured through, and I saw the article in Sunday's paper, I think about what they're doing, so, yes, people are coming to emulate what you've got going on at the LBC. That's gonna be one of the first institutions, one of the first places to have lighted floors, where you don't have to put lines on the floor to know what's pickleball, what's tennis court, and so on. It'll be set for, turn on the switch floor lights that are for pickleball boundaries, and then change another switch to the volleyball court, or to a basketball court.
Wait, would you say we're buying it?
I said that you're having a whole level of discussion that I had not thought about, so...
No, that's not for our facility. Not yet.
Well, but you're thinking, you're having a...
Is that it with the glow-in-the-dark trail?
Yeah. Gone that route as well, and thanks, Eldon. Yeah, no, so, yeah, there's opportunities.
You're right, in all seriousness, though, Matt, you know, we're creating a vision for everyone in the community to think about, just like the Wellness Center, just like the LBC was.
Well, and just like the athletic complex, right? That's a standard now, and people are looking at that as an opportunity, and so, and the school's done a great job of creating this campus, and now we've got a part of that campus, and now we've got the Davis Park renovations that we have planned that we're gonna do, and so that'll just add to Davis Park Pool being a part of that, so it'll be a...
And I can tell you, when my oldest, who just turned thirty-six yesterday, was playing baseball in sixth grade, we had a team that we played every year from Center Point that always wanted to schedule a doubleheader on a Saturday, like nine AM at noon, so that the afternoon, the whole team and parents would go over to the pool. Every year for three or four years, they did that. That was in their plan. They loved, they loved our team anyway, because we had, it was always a good time, we always had fun, but for them, coming to Mount Vernon was an event. And I know that I've seen that with my younger son, I've also seen that, you know, through my umpiring days, and people from other communities see that. And I know what's happening with the LBC, too. So, good ones.
Do you have any direction?
I think you got what you need, man.
You have a lot of comments, yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, man.
Move on to change order number eleven, police station.
Are we gonna hit triple doings or...
Well, we're still doing better than nine, well, a hundred and some, I think, at the LBC, so.
Been a week.
Yeah. Throw the water lines, heating unit that went from cooking the staff at eighty degrees to quitting and getting down to fifty-four.
Two.
But I did, I did expect a couple of change orders, similar to what we're talking about. We did start cutting through the floor again for these locker rooms, where we're finding, the water line was just basically run up into the attic space inside the insulation. Nobody can fathom how they didn't have water issues before, so there's some things that we've just, we've found with this portion that I expected, and again, the reason that we moved the one ninety-six over.
Just bring Jim Moore right again.
Was it architectural design issue, or was it construction issue?
There, I, I think there were a couple of things that could've been reviewed a little more thorough during the design process, but this is also, you know, walking into an old house and not knowing what you're looking at until you open the walls and go, ooh, this might be a bigger project than what we had expected.
I just wanna get it done.
Oh, you should, thank you. I reminded him December thirty-first was a while ago, and he says, we're still good for December thirty-first.
I will say that Septagon has been a dream to work with compared to the LBC.
We may be looking into some insulation. We did some blown-in last year, if you remember that, in some of the areas, but we're now finding, as they cut drywall away, it creates a nice channel of like an air conditioning vent that flows right down from somewhere inside that's not capped off. So we've gotta chase those down right now, we're still trying to figure out where some of that stuff is, so...
There'll be another change order to the tile, so we have nice tile gap, nice tile gap, so ask them to give us a price to fix the other two areas. Part of the grid had been damaged, just the way that it was constructed as well, so that'll be probably fifteen thousand-ish, give or take. So that'll be forthcoming, probably at your next meeting, and a couple, I'm, like I said, expecting a couple more.
We just want it done, too. We're getting closer.
Stopped up.
Okay, this is my time?
I know, I'm sorry.
Do apologize, I'm gonna go back upstairs. Thank you. I wanna know if anybody had any other questions or anything. I did fail to give you a director's report, so I apologize for that, but I have nothing really significant, other than we have our anniversary coming up for the LBC on January thirty-first, four-year anniversary, so we'll get one of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Monster, it looks like, for accepting a little bit less for credit for twelve forty-four. Less work done on the dogwash station.
I know you...
I would have approval of change order number eleven, the amount of six thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thank you, Paul, as her second.
Second.
Moving second to move forward on change order number eleven of police station renovations. For the vote on that, all who have that motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, police report.
Nothing additional, what's not in the, if you got questions or anything on the report itself, I did want to, I don't know if you caught the news tonight when you got home, but there were several, we refer to them as swatting incidents, where people called in active threats to various schools in eastern Iowa, I'm assuming across the state, but I'm listening to eastern Iowa, so we were monitoring those. We immediately deployed to both school districts and had officers just in the area monitoring, and were in communication with the superintendents of both districts from there, they were all focused and seemed, trying to trace those down, but probably not even from our area, but just to give you a heads up on that, so...
Did we have to do anything? West Branch need any assistance?
No, they had, there was one of the schools that had, that received a call, and everybody responded down to West Branch. I reached out and had contact with their acting chief at the current time, and they handled it as well as they could, and treated it the way they should've, and went from there, and are gonna debrief on that tomorrow yet, so, but they're good.
Good.
Part of the interviewing committee down there?
Yes, I, assisting them with their police chief interviews, we were down there, I drove down Saturday, that was fun. But we got there, and then we'll be back down this next, this upcoming Saturday for a couple more interviews for their selection of candidates, so. And we have not, as far as staffing for shifts, they're covered for January, so they don't have any need for our officers in January until, we'll see what tomorrow, or discussion after today's events, but looked like they had everything covered from that standpoint, so we're there if they need us, and wait to hear from them.
Thank you, Shannon, Public Works, Eldon.
Um, I, first I wanna apologize for not getting the report in.
I thought you were giving...
You were giving it pretty fast.
I was, I was. I'll have you know, I did take plenty of pictures, and I can fill in my next report.
We get double on the next one, right?
They're all snow people, though.
I kinda put some bullet points together, just to kinda fill you guys in on some stuff that we had done, but, and it was, we had a bit of a transition from working out at the new buildings to just white out nonstop for a week and a half, so. Brady, Lam Electric, got some panels, electrical panel set in both of those buildings. We got conduit laid in from one, from the north building to the south building for a set panel in the south building. We set electrical boxes, lighting outlets, switches, all that stuff, ran all the wire for that, and then Brady came out and actually hooked that stuff up for us, and we have, we have lights, we have openers working in the south building, so we'll work on that other stuff later. We did get a chance to get the Christmas decorations down and the banner switch downtown, all the light poles. Jane, Dean, Christian, and Cal have been doing a fair amount of painting at the PD, at the LBC, and I think so at City Hall, been pretty busy with that. Kinda had a, had an emergency curb stop replacement for a water valve in front of the pizza halls, and so that was kind of a hurry of offense on that. There was a, removing or replacing a light base on a light pole at Memorial Park that apparently, you could just like move the entire light pole around, like, I don't, and the base was still connected, so I don't know. We busted off the top and then we reported the base and apparently hadn't been working for some time as well, according to the neighbor. So we fixed the electrical and ordered a new base and got that light working after some time, so. So the first weather event kinda came in on Monday, the eighth. We pretty much haven't stopped, between pre-training, plowing, loading, plowing, hauling, plowing, I don't know if I said that. Been pretty nonstop, finally got a break Saturday, Saturday night about seven PM. Finally kinda, some of us couldn't get home, some of us could, some of us needed help getting back in.
Sorry, you helping the school district on Monday?
And, yes, and then, I haven't, I haven't yet, but, and then we had a full internment due on Monday, so we needed to dig grave out of the cemetery, so we did that Saturday evening, because we knew the temperatures were gonna get frigid, a lot more frigid Sunday and Monday, so, did that. Then obviously, we're still cleaning up piles, trying to get the piles around, covering down storage room for snow, but the piles that were more of a safety issue at intersections and that sort of thing downtown, trying to get those holes out. And yes, we did the school for the caucuses and stuff, the school was trying to clear out a lot of snow and get things in working order for obvious safety reasons as well, but, so we, we came over and helped them with all of our equipment and got, went fairly quick, actually.
You guys did a great job. Given how much snow there was, you really, really did well.
Well, we had a, we had a post-storm meeting this morning at the shop and talked about the two good things and the bad things, and most of which were good, a few breakdowns, some minor communication issues with a few things, but we all agreed that we were really weaponing the storm's butt until, until temps dropped, really, well, we were having, you know, pavement was pretty clear for the most part for a long time, and once, once the temperatures dropped and there was, there was no way to keep it off, then, that's when we started running into the cold pack and not being able to keep things off.
I think Republic Works and Police, the fire, this is an unusual, unusual...
And I told staff that, too, I said, you know, this isn't every winter, this isn't every day of every winter.
I do get questions from time to time, why we don't drop our blades... I do get questions from time to time, why we don't drop our blades all the way to the pavement. The answer is, unlike highways, interstates that don't have manholes or other obstacles that are actually in the street.
Storing drainage.
Right. We can't drop the blades to bare concrete all the time. So that's why there is a buildup of snow and the cold temps really make it somewhat difficult. So we put product on and then we come back and the guys were out today just, you know, moving slush. But I always get that question is why, you know, they see the DOT and the big trucks and they're like, well, they go right down to the concrete service. Why can't you? Well, if you, they look big. Tow trucks look massive until you hit something. And the jolt that you'll take, you know, 25 miles an hour in one of those trucks, if you hit something and then it knocks the blade, it, it will bounce, one of those large trucks. So...
It'll actually trip the blade and it could potentially fold that blade. I've seen that happen before, but it just pulled the entire blade up. The truck and the flower are beaten. It's not, it's not yet. Not safe, it's really not. Well, many of our streets also have a...
Crown.
Crown. A lot of the highways and things don't.
No, and putting, putting salt on, on streets when you've got negative temps is just kind of a...
Well, and then most of the DOT, there's actually three different departments in the DOT that, that meet at 30, 30 and 1 is kind of the interchange for all three of those departments. So, so you have Animal Centimeter, Abbott and Island City all coming to this, this one spot, turn around and go back to the other way. And I think it's, I want to say Animal Centi is the one who, they actually put calcium in their, in their brine system, which then drops the freezing point down to, I don't know, like 20 below. So, so they, if they put that in, it does help clear things up. But, but part of the problem you have if you use, you know, blowing snow and you melt things, that blowing snow then sticks to the wet stuff and then you still get the hard pack on there. So, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily good to, to do that. Or freezes just enough to be ice that you can't see. Yes, yes. No, it makes it come off easier later. It'll peel off easier later, but you can't get it off immediately. It just turns into cold pack, hard pack snow and, and this gets like, so... And it's a sketchy, fine line where if, I want to say 15 degrees is typically where we roll the brine and turn brine down because then it turns into sheet ice, just straight brine. So, that's not safe.
Well, and you, you see that people, why are there so many cars in the ditch on the interstate when the trucks are out? There's a sweet spot. And as soon as it hits that, it flash freezes and makes the driving surface very, very slippery. So, yeah, 100% kudos to the entire staff, you know, officers responding to incidences, many of them on Highway 30. And then our staff, and the thing that, I know people are going to say, well, that's, you know, what a great way to do, but Eldon didn't go home for four or five days in a row. He slept in the office. We had other employees that slept at the hotel while this, I mean, granted, we, we don't necessarily do this very often, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's sacrifices be, beyond that. And it, it went as well as I could have ever imagined. Just, I dread long-term snow events because I know what it's going to do to everybody.
And again, that was part of the conversation this morning is, it's kind of a crapshoot. Every storm is different, the way it moves in, whether, you know, if it's rain first and, or sleet, or it's all snow, if it's wet snow, if it's like fluffy snow. I mean, the variables are always different. So, trying to, trying to make the right call early is just a gamble sometimes and just hope you try to make the right one.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your services, all departments. Again, you make us look good. Parks and Rec, whole library, I think we saw written report there from...
And I appreciate Grayson's reports, the last several months.
And the number of activities that they send you is great.
Any discussion items? Reports, mayor's reports. There's a couple things. Before I came over here, there was a reception at the bank with Mount Vernon Community School District Foundation Alumni Association. First time both two groups have gotten together. They both have originally knew, ultimately knew directors. So, the two boards have never talked before. So, it was a good, good conversation. A bank clerk officer wanted to know more about the CHI Cottonwood Trails Project. So, I'll catch up with her at some point and maybe get some input from you guys, of course, before that. That was a good chat. Greg shared that, and Ricky Allen shared that they had 100 people that are interested and asked for information about the superintendent search, 20 search and filled out applications. He'd love to look that and literally tonight they're reading it down to three, four, five, six, whatever the number is. But out of that 11, I believe that was the last number. So that's superintendent search's every process. Mayor's email system kind of blew up with the Perry shooting and so on, with a mayor there that deals with that in the community. And a resource was sent out to mayor's, that's the first time I've seen it, but, but that resource was, it's on my laptop right now, is a 198-page guide entitled, Mayor's Guide to Mass Shootings. And last night I was on a, a call with Lynn County Emergency Management. And think of emergency management, like floods and winds, and storms, derritos, things like that. But that doesn't even cover personally tragedy like a mass shooting. And I'm not through the 198 pages, but...
What?
Oh, my God. But I don't know what I was more shocked at, the size of it or that there's, that it exists. But there's a right way and a wrong way to do that.
Who did write it, by the way?
It was, the foreword was by a, a mayor who experienced it, Columbine, or maybe the school shooting in East Coast, I can't remember which.
It's a national document.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the, the point of, that this mayor said that it's not a question of, yeah, it's a question of when. So if you're naive, if you think it's not going to be able to happen in your community, whether it's human trafficking or a mass shooting, we're just one person from going crazy and it coming happening here at Church and Berry's or some council, you know. This whole Leadership Academy took the next series of video Zoom meetings, and there were like 200 mayors on this Zoom meeting. I was interested in the number of questions about councils and mayor pro temps about replacing the mayor. I got my attention, like, huh? These are newly-elected councils about replacing...
You got my attention?
There were questions about people doing paper votes. How long do they keep, need to keep the paper votes? So this, so we're not voting publicly. You would collect the paper votes from everybody and you would hit the, the results of the election through a paper vote. I didn't know that existed since grade school. Or changing your votes. If you want to change your vote on it, I mean, how long can you do that? How, what's the process for doing it? And I didn't know that was a thing, but interesting.
I'm going to go re-watch this.
Interesting things that come up. And tomorrow we're catching lunch at Economic Alliance in Cedar Rapids. And we'll see what, learn from that. Because...
Tom, thanks for all the time that you are putting in.
I learned so much new stuff and it is so freaking interesting. You never know what the next email, next phone call will be like. I'm learning about the migratory flight of birds, the lighting system that we have in Mount Vernon. And I mean, I'm surprised you have time to go to the LBC and...
That's why you do yoga.
Chill out. But it is, it is seriously, I mean, this is, every job I've had has been my best job. And this is, I keep, I keep going. I mean, literally so interesting and so much stuff off the wall that I would have never been able to guess. And there's some Come to Jesus Day discussions, something that, that, you know, churn you up. But it is very interesting. So, there with that.
Well, thank you for doing it.
No, I'm enjoying it. Any council reports?
I am going to be attending the Community Development Board Retreat on Saturday morning. It's nine to 12, which is always a really great thing to do, to have time for everybody to set aside from a regular day. And it's three hours of mostly brainstorming, which is always really effective, I think, whenever I've been involved in those.
I copy you on the email about inviting for Childcare Solutions Group.
Yes.
Look, I wasn't mature.
You did, for April, yeah.
By the way, Joe was at that initial meeting.
Yeah, he was.
At the, at the police station. But I want to include Lisa White and our rep on it too. Chris noted when you're going to be gone, who's covering, is it the next meeting or second next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting for Lori, okay. Yeah, there it is. Being with superintendent and Cornell representation a couple of months from now. We had the Mount Vernon Lisbon's Childcare Support Meeting today. And the basic theme was sustainability of the progress that was made in the first year, which is significant, frankly, as a grassroots group that was just trying to ensure that childcare professionals were adequately paid so they would stay in, stay in their jobs. And hopefully even attract some others to come to Mount Vernon and provide additional childcare support. That, that really is what they're trying to do now. What we're trying to do is sustain that so that we can have additional funds and money to do it for a second year and apply for a grant. And that's the short term. The long term is to have something more permanent here, a facility, a building of some sort that we would have to fundraise for. And so really there are two focus areas that we're really looking at. And, you know, that group has been together now for almost a year and a half and has kept its momentum pretty well. Renee Verley has really just done a fabulous job of leadership. We had some really good leaders from the start. And I think that the last thing I'll say about that is that Tom has graciously agreed to help pull together a second large group meeting, which is why you referenced sending out Stephanie and Joe and Lisa an invitation to come together sometime, what, in April, probably? Right, not during your regular meeting time, but to get school board, CDG, maybe even Lisbon, the council on Lisbon's school board, to hear the message from Cherry Penny, from Iowa Women's Foundation, and what the Leaver and Lordess have been doing so far, and Renee about water actions. And as Craig alluded to, there are 11 organizations, 11 governmental units at the state that are, are working on their own project, their own county or city or whatever. And we're the first one that made, actually made payments to people that are, you know, boots up the street here. This one already got theirs. I think Mount Vernon's getting a check in like another month or so. They're getting their first payment. So...
We're talking about $50,000 too.
Yeah.
That's significant.
And getting it organized and out, that's, that's the talking stage. So, that is great. Anything else this morning? I think we're ready to close the initial part of the meeting. If there's anything else in general, and we still want to go into closed session, so are we ready to ask for a motion there?
Motion, motion there, close.
Ms. Mark and Paul, we're going into closed session here. If someone wants to call favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Motion carries.